Welcome to the Virtual Common Council Meeting, May 4, 2020. I call to order, Pledge Allegiance. Councilman Vincent. Councilman Vincent.
Sorry, muted. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call by Clerk Treasurer Parthum.
Uh, Councilman Vincent.
Here.
Councilwoman Ficus?
Present.
Councilwoman West? Councilwoman Galloway? Councilwoman Cutler?
Present.
Councilman Frankie?
Present.
Six present, one absent.
Approval of minutes. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, state by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Petitions and comments of the citizens who will continue during this COVID time to allow for public comment through our social media outlet for this meeting and currently.
Live on both your Facebook page and City Reports Facebook page.
No comments, but we will look at that again at the end before we adjourn the meeting. Councilwoman West.
Your Honor, this is the second and final reading of an ordinance of the City of LaPort, Indiana, authorizing the issuance of the City of LaPort, Indiana taxable economic development revenue bonds, FNC Development Incorporated project, and the lending of the proceeds thereof to greater support economic development corporation, and authorizing and approving other actions in respect thereto. End of reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. So, all in favor, state by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Passes seven zero. So, we don't need to read that again. Questions regarding the second and final reading.
No. Motion to approve the ordinance as presented. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Bert Cook, do you want to give a brief overview of this ordinance?
Um, so the ordinance in front of you is we addressed at the last council meeting. Just to be very brief, because we talked through a lot of the details at the last time. This is authorizing the financing of the city's bond issuance for the Flaherty and Collins project. So, the details are there. You passed a resolution at your last meeting. I've got another resolution for you here in a second, but that ordinance is in relation to that project.
Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the second final reading of this ordinance?
Aye.
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 opposed? Motion passes six zero. Somebody. Roger. It shouldn't be done.
Some feedback?
How's that?
Great.
Great. Councilwoman Cutler, introduction of a resolution.
Your Honor, I move to introduce a resolution, read for the first and only time in its entirety.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, state by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes six zero. Councilwoman Cutler.
A resolution of the Common Council of the City of LaPort, Indiana, approving an amendment of the declaratory resolution and redevelopment plan for the central business redevelopment area. Whereas the City of LaPort Redevelopment Commission, Redevelopment Commission, previously adopted and amended a declaratory revolution, resolution establishing the central business redevelopment area, the redevelopment area, designating portions thereof as the central business allocation area number one, original allocation area, the central business allocation area number two, 2005 allocation area, and the central business allocation area number three, hospital allocation area, and approving a redevelopment plan for the redevelopment area as amended from time to time the plan. And whereas on March 18, 2020, the Redevelopment Commission approved and adopted a resolution, the 2020 resolution, amending the declaratory resolution to create a separate new allocation area consisting of the parcels described in Exhibit A of the 2020 resolution, the F and C parcels, and two, removing the F and C parcels from the original allocation area. And whereas the Redevelopment Commission submitted the 2020 resolution to the City of LaPort Plan Commission, the Plan Commission, for its approval pursuant to Indiana Code 36-7-14-16. And whereas the Plan Commission heretofore issued its order approving the 2020 resolution, resolution. Now therefore be resolved by the Common Council of the City of LaPort, Indiana as follows. One, the Common Council hereby approves the amendment to the declaratory resolution and the plan is provided in the 2020 resolution, and hereby approves the order of the Plan Commission approving the 2020 resolution. Two, this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage by the Common Council and approval by the mayor as required by law. End of resolution.
Do I have a motion?
I move to approve resolution.
Second.
And a second discussion. Bert Cook, do you mind sharing on this information, breaking this down?
Sure, Mayor. As I said before, this is in conjunction, same project, Flaherty and Collins. So, this resolution identifies our allocation area, our Newport Landing Central Business District allocation area. Because of the way this project is financed, we have to pull the property, the Flaherty and Collins property out of that allocation area and form its own sort of self-contained allocation area. So, this resolution does that. It also identifies that ultimately, ultimately this came from the Redevelopment Commission and then through the Plan Commission. Both of those entities obviously have voted favorably on this in order for it to continue its way to you at the city council. So, again, part of the financing package, this is a mechanical issue that we have to do to form this new allocation.
And that's where the bonds will be paid to into this allocation area.
Correct. This allocation will be the unit that makes the debt service payments. The increment comes from this allocation area. Correct.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, state by saying aye.
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 Motion passes six zero. Councilman Galloway.
Governor, I'd like to introduce a resolution.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I have a motion and a second, all in favor, state by saying aye.
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 Yeah, they can't hear me. So, I have a motion and a second, all in favor, state by saying aye.
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 Motion passes six zero.
Resolution waiving water and sewer billing late fees during disaster emergency. Whereas on March 6, 2020, the governor of Indiana declared a public health emergency due to a pandemic created by coronavirus disease, 2019 outbreak, COVID-19, pursuant to Indiana Code 10-14-3-12. And whereas on March 13, 2020, the President of the United States declared a national emergency for the same. And whereas Section 98-101, the City of LaPort Municipal Code provides for late payment of water charges for unpaid balances. And Section 98-262 of the City of LaPort Municipal Code provides for a late payment on sewer charges for unpaid balances. Whereas the Mayor Thomas Dermody recommends the Common Council waive late fees provided by ordinance for the duration of the governor's emergency declaration and one month thereafter. Whereas the city council recognizes the financial hardships this pandemic will inflict upon the residents of LaPort and the need to make final decisions on timing of payments and expenses. I'll therefore be resolved by the Common Council of the City of LaPort that during the duration of the emergency declaration by the governor, one month later, waive all fees under. Okay, Section 98-101 and Section 98-262. This does not alleviate the underlying duty to pay water and sewer bills, but provide citizens flexibility to make final decisions and timing of payments. End of resolution.
Thank you, Councilman.
Let me shut it off.
Councilman Galloway, do I have a motion?
Make a motion to adopt.
I have a motion. And a second discussion? I mean, just remember, this is going to come to light at some point. We have to help those that need help, but the governor has extended this till June 1. And then we will begin working with residents on payments as well as going back to water shut offs after that June 1. So, people in the community still need to be prepared to pay these bills. We have to help those that need help during this difficult time. But payments late, or I guess, water shut offs will take effect as of June 1. Anything you would like to add on this?
I can add. I can add for the year. Year to date, we're averaging about $3,900 in monthly penalty, late payment charges. In 2019, our average monthly penalty charges were $7,092. And then in 2018, I think it was even a little bit higher. So, that you can tell that we were handling things pretty well year to date so far. So, we're in a good spot. It should be good moving forward.
And I will tell you, speaking to other mayors, I talked to one community similar to ours that's already $100,000 behind in collection. So, of water fees and so forth, monthly billings. So, shout out and congratulations and thank you to the Clerk Treasurer's office and the utility department and the residents of LaPort because we're in a good spot. Attorney Otis?
Yeah, this resolution is coming from a recommendation from the mayor, but Courtney and I received guidance from the State Board of Accounts that you, as the council, need to formally approve this. So, we may, I think probably the best thing at the end of this, we will probably ask for a resolution, formally taking this resolution away so that we have documentation of that as well.
So, I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, state by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes six zero. Councilwoman Ficus?
Your Honor, I move to read and to introduce an ordinance, read for the first time in its entirety. Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, state by saying aye.
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 Motion passes six zero. Councilwoman Ficus?
An ordinance amending ordinance 18-2019 of the City of LaPort, Indiana, to establish salary for a new position in the engineering department. Be it, and it is hereby ordained by the Common Council of the City of LaPort, Indiana, that Section 1, ordinance number 18-2019 of the City of LaPort, Indiana, adopted by the Common Council on October 21, 2019, is hereby amended to the belief the following positions. Engineering Department, Administrative Assistant, $30,072. Project Manager 2, $39,189. Engineering Technician, Part-Time, $12,480. And add the following positions. Engineering Department, Engineering Coordinator, $36,596. Project Engineer, $45,000. Section 2, in all of the regards, ordinance 18-02019 shall be unchanged. Section 3, this ordinance shall be in full force and effective upon its passage and approval by the mayor and publication as required by law. End of ordinance.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the ordinance as presented. Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second discussion. And again, I would like to just say, these aren't, we're hiring new positions, new people, we're moving individuals, quality individuals into, you know, restructuring and positions of leadership and quality work. So, this is a good situation. Are there any other questions?
Well, I would like to add that I don't believe it affects the budget as well. These changes are not going to affect the budget. It's just changes in restructuring and positions, but the budget remains the same.
Yeah, this will have to be passed a second time, or read and passed on the second time. But any other questions? Great. Councilman Frankie, introduction of an ordinance.
Your Honor, I move to introduce an amendment to an existing ordinance?
Second.
Second.
Ordinance amending sections.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, state by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes six zero. Councilman Frankie?
Ordinance amending Section 6 through 10 Dangerous Animals for the City of LaPort, Indiana. Whereas the Common Council, after due consideration, wishes to amend Section 6 through 10 of the City of LaPort Municipal Code for the City of LaPort, Indiana. Now therefore be it ordained by the Common Council of the City of LaPort that Section 1 of Section 6 or 10 Dangerous Animals of the City of LaPort Municipal Code shall be amended as follows, with new language, bolded, underlined, and italicized. I realize people at home can't see that language, bolded, underlined, or italicized, so I'll give you a wink when I'm reading that. Section A, it shall be unlawful for any person to own or harbor a dangerous animal without keeping such animal securely confined on the owner's or keeper's premises, and under such restraint that persons or domestic animals lawfully on the premises or elsewhere may not be attacked or bitten by such animal. The premises where such an animal is kept shall be adequately posted with warning signs. B, it shall be unlawful for any person, excepting a duly constituted peace officer or animal control officer engaged in the discharge of a duty imposed upon him by the laws of this state, or by the laws or postal regulations of the United States of America, or this chapter, to enter such premises or fenced areas so posted, without the permission of or in the presence of the owner, keeper of such known dangerous animal. C, any person harboring such animal will, or I'm sorry, which shall violate this section with the result that bodily injury is inflicted upon a human being or domestic animal at the time and place where said injured person or domestic animal had to be, had a right to be, shall be guilty of code violation and upon conviction shall be fined a sum not exceeding $1,000. Further, such owner shall be responsible for all costs of temperament testing and post the property where said animal is housed with a warning sign or signs as provided by the city's police department at the owner's expense. Said signs shall be posted conspicuously as directed by the police department so as to notify the public as to the danger of the animal. Any person harboring one or more of such animals which shall violate this section more than once in any five-year period with the result that bodily injury is inflicted upon a human being or domestic animal at the time and place where said injured person had a right to be, shall be guilty of an additional code violation and upon such conviction shall be fined a sum not to exceed $2,500. Further said, person having violated this section more than once in any five-year period shall not own, house, control, or supervise any animal within the City of LaPort without the written approval of the chief of police. The chief of police shall only issue said approval if upon his or her investigation it is determined that the proposed ownership, control, or supervision of such animal would not create a danger to any human being or other animal. Denial of said approval by the chief of police shall be reviewable by the Board of Works for abuse of discretion. Any animal that more than once inflicts bodily injury upon any human being or domestic animal at a time and place where said injured person or injured domestic animal had a right to be, or shall inflict said bodily injury once and has been trained to fight, attack, or kill, or has killed a human being or domestic animal, or has once inflicted the bodily injury described herein, and a law enforcement officer has determined that the animal is an immediate and continuing danger to human life or domestic animal life, shall upon 10 days' written notice to the owner be euthanized. The decision to euthanize may be appealed by the owner by filing within said 10-day period a written notice of appeal filed at the LaPort City Police Department and the LaPort Board of Works. Said appeal shall be heard by the administrative law judge. Section 2, any ordinance in conflict shall be repealed. Section 3, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval by the mayor, and publication as required by law. End of ordinance.
Counsel? Attorney Otis, would you like to break this down of what this actually?
Thank you, Mayor. I had a couple complaints from residents in the city who, over the last few years, have had, have not been personally attacked by a dog or any other domestic animal. But rather their animal, usually a dog, has been attacked by another dog. And speaking with our police chief and animal control officer, the way the current ordinance is written, they did not feel they could fine or penalize somebody for one animal attacking another the way that the ordinance was written. The only change to this ordinance is simply adding where a person, where an animal attacked a person, we're also adding where a animal attacks another domestic animal. So, that's the only addition to this. And again, that's based off kind of some of the concern that the chief of police had along with animal control officer, and also spent some time reviewing other ordinances in other communities. And they basically follow very similar language where it's a person or another domestic animal. And obviously, the reason we included domestic animal, not just any animal, is that frequently the animal will attack a bird, or a rabbit, or a squirrel, and that's, that we didn't intend for that to be penalized here.
Thank you, Attorney Otis. Any questions from council? Councilman Galloway?
Okay, right off the bat, it says, "It shall be unlawful for any person to own or harbor a dangerous animal." Is it considered dangerous before they attack somebody? That's what? Because there's a lot of different dogs, and it's tough, everybody says, there's a problem, German Shepherd or what. So, that's, they're talking, once they, once they attack somebody, it's claimed a dangerous animal? See what I mean?
Right.
Let's go ahead and mute this baby.
So, there are certain, Mr. Galloway, there's certain animals that are just considered dangerous. And I don't have the whole, all the ordinances in front of us, but there's some other wild animals that would just be considered dangerous. I'm not talking about dogs specifically. Yep, I don't think we have any category of dogs, for example, like pit bulls or other dogs that are banned outright. I think you're correct. Typically, in order for a dog to become dangerous, it would need to first take some, attack an animal or domestic animal or another human before that happens. Right. And actually, you bring up a good point, because we did have, I think, a lot of people have probably watched the Netflix special Tiger King, but we actually had a rather unique experience where our fire department responded to a call, and there were, how many? Thirty-three snakes, dangerous venomous snakes found in a. Right. So, this, we already, that's already addressed, but it is an issue that surprisingly we faced within the city limits.
Any other questions? Great. We'll move this to the May 18 meeting. Other business?
Mayor, do you have a couple?
Yes.
First, Dusty Schoeff had a couple.
First, he appreciated the livestream.
Good.
Wishes that more governmental entities are able to do that. I think Mayor, you led that, but also Councilman Frankie's been very helpful in making this work.
It wouldn't happen without Tim Frankie. Thank you, Tim Frankie.
And also Dusty stated that he'd be happy to help.
And Dusty does an excellent job of training. I think he's focused on German Shepherds, but seems to have good control of that. So, absolutely. Any other, so Councilman Frankie, and again, Dusty Schoeff would be glad to work with you on that part of it, from a training perspective for those owners that may feel they don't have good control of their animal.
Great.
That's all we have to announce.
Any questions? Right now with the governor, we're still working through his order as of last week, but we think we have a pretty good handle of it. We're going to continue to move slowly. We're going to move forward, but move slowly because we don't have the late payments or water shut off going on currently that we see opening, or at least moving forward to June 1, by continuing to offer via phone, via email to the public with the interaction to all our city offices. And we think it's worked extremely well that way, and we don't think there should be in a hurry to open up City Hall to traffic. Any questions there? Anything that you see COVID-wise that you want us working on or addressing? All city buildings will be till June 1, minimum.
I do have something to say, Mayor Dermody.
No concerns?
Yeah, I do.
Julie?
Yeah, I do. I've had a handful of people.
Councilman, Councilwoman West, am I muted or is Julie?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay. No, I've had a handful of concerns from people just talking about. Oh, okay. No, I've had a handful of concerns from people just talking about the amount of people going into Walmart, the families and the kids, and just kind of forgetting we're just coming off of an executive order. I was just wondering if any of that is going to be addressed with Walmart, because it just seems to be a pretty big concern right now.
Councilman, or I mean, Councilwoman West, Jeff Bachelor, who's been in charge of the Retail Responsibility Act of Walmart, we've had several complaints about Walmart. We reached out this afternoon, had a meeting, and they've not received any complaints, but we said we're watching. And again, they said if we put an act into order, back into order, they will honor it. We did have some late complaint today from Kroger as well. People being able to, just more about the way they've been treated by other individuals shopping, and I don't think there's anything we can do there, but people need to take a breath. They need to be safe, responsible, and allow other people to shop, and minimize it. Again, we put those acts into place because we wanted the people to feel safe, get in and get out of those grocers as quickly as possible without bringing the entire family. It's not, it's not a public event where you're supposed to be out enjoying, get what you need to get done and get out of there, and apparently, that didn't happen this weekend. So, we are monitoring that closely. Jeff Bachelor is monitoring that very closely and working with the retailers, but it seems like the grocers are the main two, Walmart and Kroger, that have had complaints against them so far.
Thank you.
I don't know, did you hear me about City Hall? I apologize, I may have been muted.
I, we heard.
Okay. Any other questions? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion and a second. Everybody have a great weekend, we are, or great week, we are adjourned.